Present us a check along with some other statements.
All right, good to see you all again. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, like I say, I'm Michael Wyman with the Department of Forestry, and I'm here to give a report on some activities of the state forests in the last year and give you some money. So as I reported to you a few years ago, the Department of Forestry and the state forest system became certified by the American Tree Farm System and the Sustainable Forestry Initiative. So this year, we had an audit by an independent auditor to see how we were doing with our certification. And we successfully met all of the standards and continue to remain certified in both of those programs. So we're happy to report that. Also, as I've been reporting to you over the last few years, we've been acquiring some land down in Charlotte County. So all of that has been completed, and this past spring, we opened to the public the Charlotte State Forest. So that adds 5,005 acres of public land to the state forest system in Virginia. So as you all know, the state forest system is self-supporting from the sale of timber and use permits for recreational activities. The county that timber is harvested in receives a portion of those timber sale proceeds. And this past fiscal year, on the Appomattox Bogonham State Forest, we sold 193 acres of final harvest timber sales and 330 acres of pine first thinnings. So Appomattox County's share of those timber sale proceeds is $43,548. All right.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir. You betcha. Thank you. Next, we'll have radio communication feasibility study. Mr. Hogan.
Mr. Chairman, the Public Safety Committee met with, along with the chiefs of the two fire departments, the President, Major Richardson from the Sheriff's Office, and members from the rescue squad, a few weeks ago, as well as some representatives from CTE, which is a communications consulting company out of Lynchburg. And Bobby, Mr. Hinkle, y'all correct me if I say anything that's not accurate, but we met with all those stakeholders. There's a problem, a steady degradation of our public safety radio service. Our system is old. When things break, it's hard to find parts. It's just time to start looking for replacement. The company, CTE, is a consulting company that tells, basically does a study, will do a study and tell us what will meet our needs, what are our options. You know, each agency has a different goal, I guess, but they all need to communicate with each other. You know, officer safety for the sheriff's office is becoming an issue. They have deputies that can't reach dispatch on their radios. There's some, you know, coverage problems for the fire departments in certain parts of the county. Sometimes the radio in the truck might work, but the handheld radio won't. So to that end, we met, we talked with this company, what could they do, what could they offer us? This company is also, right now, doing a study for Prince Edward. They've done one for Lunenburg. They've done one for Campbell, Amelia. Several localities around us have used this company. They get high marks from everybody they've done business with. I've talked to a few of them myself, and I think Bobby has talked to at least three where they took a project from start to finish, and all the way from doing the study to what do you need, to implementing the radio system itself, overseeing the implementation of it from a vendor. They have offered us, basically, three phases. Phase one would be the study phase, just finding out, number one, what do we have? How many frequencies do we have? What band do they own? What do we need? A county our size and the number of agencies we have, the number of employees we have, how many radios you're going to need, how many frequencies you'll need, whether we stay on the band we're on, whether we go to a different band, because frequencies are becoming less and less available on the current bandwidth we're on. So they could do that study, and then that phase one would run us right at $40,000, not quite, $38,950. Then they would develop a needs assessment and say, okay, based on interviews with the sheriff's office and the fire department and the rescue squad and dispatch and animal control and everybody that's involved, this is what Appomattox needs for a radio system. That would be phase one. Phase two would be then they would go out and develop an RFP to put out to these radio vendors with all the specifics and all the technical language that would be needed to say, okay, this is what Appomattox is looking for. Then they would evaluate those vendor responses, and then let us know which vendors basically have the best response and what our best options are. That's phase two. They would also negotiate with those vendors and develop a contract with them before we'd make any final decisions. That phase is $84,500. So phase one, phase two, you're looking at $123,450. That gets us probably sometime about a year from now. And then phase three would be when we finally determine a vendor that we want to pick, assuming that that's how this thing goes. Once we sign a contract with a vendor, then phase three that they offer is basically the project management and technical oversight for the implementation and the building of the radio system and installation. And they do the testing to make sure it works like the vendors say it's going to work. One of the things that came up is foliage on the trees. A lot of vendors will tell you it'll work, and they'll come out and do their testing in the middle of December when there's no leaves on the trees. And then when May, when the leaves pop out, radios don't work, or they don't do what they say they will do. So those kinds of things are issues that they brought to light. That is, that phase is $15,000 per month and could run anywhere from 18 to 24 months. That's the most expensive part of the consulting agreement. If it runs 18 months, it's $270,000. If it's 24 months, it's, I didn't even do the math on that one, but it's more. So as a committee, I think we all agree, this is kind of the approach that we would like to take. We'd like to get somebody, a consultant, to study our needs, what do we need, before we start going to look for prices. We need to first know what we need to price. Everybody on the committee and the stakeholders group all thought this was a path that we'd like to take. I personally, after looking at it a little bit more and thinking about it some more, and Mr. Hinkle may feel differently, I don't know, but phase three, to me, is so far down the road, talking a year from now, and it's rather open-ended. You know, you don't know how long it's going to take to do your implementation, because you don't know what kind of system you're going to be looking at. If you're looking at a system that's going to require us to build towers, well, it's going to take longer than a system that doesn't need any new towers. I feel comfortable in us going ahead with phase one, committing to phase one and phase two now to get the ball rolling. And then as we get some more details, I feel like phase three is something we can talk to them about as we get closer to that point, so we'll know how long phase three is going to be, so we can have a better idea of how much the cost is going to be. Another issue that another county ran into was, they had an issue with towers. Their project got extended for six months because of the foliage issue, because now they got to wait until May. It's too late for them to do anything this year, so now they got to come back and test it all in the spring after the leaves come out. Well, that's going to put them six months behind schedule. Well, if it's $15,000 a month for an extra six months, that's $90,000. I'd rather have a better idea before committing long-term to that. That's just me. I fully recommend phase one and two. Phase three, I personally would like to hold off on. Bobby's talked to the company, and they're willing to do any of the phases. They'll do phase one if that's all they want to do. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Hinkle?
I do have one correction.
Okay.
It's CTA, not CTE.
Okay, I stand corrected.
But I fully support that we go into both phases, one and two. I think this is something we desperately need to do, is to get, you know, a communication system where all our public service people can rely on it, and not only helps them and saves their lives, but also citizens' lives, because then, you know, EMS and whatever can get back and get the answers that they need that, with a bad communication system, might cause somebody getting the wrong treatment or the wrong. On the second part, I feel that what they presented as far as the implementation plan, I think it's something that guarantees success of the communication system. But based on the scenario that Mr. Hogan just presented, I would think that looking before we entered into that phase three, want something where it says that, well, if there's no work that can be done, then we shouldn't pay them for those months where there's that dead space. So that'd be a concern of mine.
Yeah, I would fully support this company doing a phase three for us. I just want some more negotiation to make sure we knew what we're getting in the phase three and how much it's going to cost us. The overall cost of a radio system, depending on what we wind up with, what kind of recommendation they have, depending on what band you go on, depending on how many radios you need, comparable counties that our size and with the number of agencies we have, anywhere between $5 to $7 million is what they're seeing come back as a complete system. Not the consultant fee, that's the entire system. But that's something we need to know, and we'll know that probably a little before we ever get to phase three. Is that something we can even afford? How we want to do it? Do we want to do it in pieces? But we'll never know if we don't start.
Y'all done a good job.
And Mr. Lashley's looked over the consulting agreement, and there's a cooperative purchase agreement part of the language in there that allows us to use this company without having to go out for bids.
All right. So what tonight is need approval, phase one, phase two?
That would be our Public Safety Committee's recommendation, yes.
And what's the cost?
Total cost on that is $123,450.
And Mr. Chairman, as I understand it, Mr. Wingfield already has a bill payer line for that.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me that we do have some wireless 911 funds that could pay for this, so it won't affect, it won't come out of our budget.
And I also believe there's possibility of RPA money that could be used, too.
Right.
Or whatever that fund's called.
Yeah.
Oh, Arfa. Okay. I'm like, I'm not sure.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll entertain any questions from the board or Ms. Adams if I can answer them.
Anyone have any questions? Any concerns? Then we need a motion.
If not, then I'll make a motion that we enter into a consulting agreement with CTA Incorporated, consultants out of Lynchburg, for phase one and phase two of a total cost of $123,450.
Motion duly made, is that so?
Second.
Discussion? We have a roll call vote. Mr. Hill? Mr. Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Hinkle?
Hi.
Mr. Hogan?
Hi.
I also vote aye. Good job. Next is update on facility study courthouse. The board authorized staff to issue a facility study RFP and an old courthouse assessment. John Spencer prepared to provide an update on the solicitation. Mr. Spencer, welcome, sir.
Good evening. I would talk briefly about two different projects, similar but different. And I just want you to know that the facilities committee, Mr. Hinkle, Mr. Carter, has met several times over the past, I guess, several months, spring and summer, on these projects. The first project is the historic courthouse. And if you may remember, due to the history that the firm has with the historic courthouse, the new courthouse, and the proposed connector between the two of them from 20 years ago, the firm of Architectural Partners, which is the successor firm to Craddock Cunningham, they were contracted with to provide us with a analysis of the facility, basically the bricks and mortar, how, you know, how good is the... Yeah? Okay, is that better?
Can y'all hear?
Sorry. So they were contracted with to provide us a facility analysis and also kind of go into the next phase, which would be renovation of the building to enable the use of the building as a boardroom facility, with one wing being for closed session purposes, with some restrooms and maybe a kitchenette type thing for the board, the other wing being available for other needs, office, et cetera. So the report came back from Architectural Partners, which is the firm that Gary Harvey runs, okay, just for reference. But basically, the building has good bones, just needs all-new electrical plumbing, mechanicals. The roof was redone a few years ago, so there's, you know, there's a lot there structural-wise, but it would obviously have to be, like I said, modernized in terms of mechanical, electrical plumbing. He provided us what he called order of magnitude construction costs, and he gave it kind of a base, an intermediate, and a full option level, and provided, again, this is not a full construction budget, this is kind of ballpark figures for budgeting purposes, that's all. So I'm going to give you some numbers. I emailed this out today, I don't know how many of y'all actually had the ability to see it, but the number, just the construction number, not the soft cost of, with your A&E fees and certain other fees that he mentions in his report, the number's about $800,000, $806 here on this, to do a minimal base option for that building. And that has minimal brick repointing, it has painting of all exposed wood, windows and doors, but not necessarily repair and made operational. It doesn't address the front porch, which has issues. So there's a lot of, you know, like I said, it's a minimal approach. It does a two-story connector between the two buildings. Now, the intermediate option may be the sweet spot. It is construction cost only, about $1,025,000, right at about $1,000,000 for this option. Extensive brick repointing, repair and painting of all exposed wood, windows and doors, repair of front porch steps and the porch itself. You get a higher grade of case work, you get an upgraded controls package for your mechanical systems, and, you know, just a little, a more thorough project. Now, what I didn't tell you is that by the time you add some of these 10% fees for A&E and 10% for furniture fixtures, equipment, et cetera, you end up with about $1,000,000 on the first option, and the second option goes from $1,000,000 to 1.3, almost 1.4. Now, the full option is, you get something that, as he keeps saying in here, brings you to the Secretary of the Interior Design Standards for masonry or for historic building interiors or whichever you're looking at. So you get a comprehensive brick cleaning, repair and repointing, you get interior that, case work, et cetera, that's more of a historical period correct, maybe for the building, you know, complete removal and resetting of the front porch stone steps and removal and resetting of the brick pavers on the front porch, you know, repair of the iron railing, things of that nature, with the goal being that you would bring it back to more of a period look. So this option is about 1.7, 1.8 million. By the time you add all of these soft fees and everything, you're probably looking at about 2.3. Now, you could do a few of those things and add it on to the intermediate, the middle level, but I think that the committee's thought was somewhere between the intermediate and the full option is probably where we would want to be with this project. And I guess my goal this evening is just to kind of judge the board's feelings on that and whether or not, because the next step is basically for Mr. Harvey and his firm to start doing some mockups, some of the artist's renditions, so to speak, of the facility, start talking about more of the programmatic, exactly, you know, what do you want out of this? But he kind of wanted to know, you know, what budget range are we talking about here before we go any further with it? I don't know if Mr. Carter, Mr. Hinkle, Ms. Adams, if you have anything else to add to this.
There's one thing that I forgot, and I was reminded today from a constituent, and that was the basement. Is there anything going on down there? I couldn't remember as far as work.
Well...
I was carrying, and look at that, down the basement, it's mostly, that's where your heat vac and air conditioning stuff is, that's about all it's used for down there. And as far as that goes, with the base proposal, it included a new package HVAC and a new electrical system. Then when we went to the intermediate package, it included upgraded control packages for those, so. And then the third package, the high rate, it put those systems into a zone, so you'd have different zones, so you could control a different part of the building separate from, which to me is a better way to go. But the basement is mostly just your mechanical.
I will add that sometimes there's a little confusion, because there used to be offices in the basement, but that whole back section of the building where the registrar and the victim witness offices were, that is gone. That, so, none of that exists, because that had to be torn off in order to put the new courthouse behind it. It's, I don't, I guess part of it is still dirt, is that...
It's concrete. Picture of the basement tells you very well on that.
But, yeah, it will be utilized for all the mechanicals down in there, but that, what was a, basically a three-story addition that was on the back of that courthouse was torn down 20 years ago, so there are no office facilities, no restroom. So all three of these would add the connector in between the two buildings, and there would be some work done, theoretically speaking, in the courthouse lobby to ensure that there would be adequate security, because people would be expected to enter through the front doors of the new courthouse. The restroom facilities for the public would be in the new courthouse. And the elevator for that new courthouse, when it was built, it was built with two-sided doors, with the understanding and with the hope that someday that there would be a connector so that you would actually be able to use the doors that are always behind you that do not open now.
And the outside structure at the very back on the west end, did he say anything about that as far as the foundation and structural of the brick?
Well, there are areas of concern. You know, overall, the building has, like I said, has good bones. There are definitely areas of the brickwork that need to be repaired, some more than others. So he said that nothing that raises concern that that building could not be reused for something like your boardroom or like office spaces. And like I mentioned a few moments ago, I think I did, that the roof was redone probably five, six, seven years ago, something of that nature. So that was already done, that helped save the building. Now, inside, yeah, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. There was, you know, through the years, particularly with the last tenant, you know, things are already changed around in there. And one of the things that you would have to decide with this project is, would you want to remove the stadium seating that's in the building? And apparently is not original to the building. I don't know if there's anybody in Appomattox now that remembers when there was a flat floor in there, but former supervisor Moore, Russell Moore, told me when he was just a little boy, he remembered that there was a flat floor, but for some reason, they went in with stadium seating. So it's just some things like that that the board would have to decide as well. But anyway, again, I was just kind of looking for directions as to what the possible budget might be, so that I can give Mr. Harvey some direction.
Okay.
Mr. Carter?
Mr. Hinkle.
To answer your brick question, in reading the reports, they did, they're talking about 360 all the way around the building, they're not just taking like the front. This report calls all bricks all around the whole building, because they'll be repointing and repairing.
And in the very back of the building where that kind of fire wall was put in, that's where your connector would go. that's where your connector would go. So you'd really end up with, you know, three walls of, of brick as it is now off the original building and then the, then the connector in between, it would be a two-story connector.
Okay, my fellow board members, any questions? Mr. Spencer? Any concerns?
My only concern is how we pay for it. We're gonna pay for them, Ms. Adams.
What, what does our debt situation look like? I mean, we've got, we just went in, we've got a lot of debts coming off the books next year.
We do, yes.
But we just added ten million for the school. You know, looking five, six years down the road, we could be looking at another ten million based on this being roughly two million and a five or six million dollar radio system and a one and a half million dollar fire truck. If we're gonna continue to pay for those kinds of things, you're looking at another ten million dollars the next five or six years. Is that even feasible? I mean, I want to see the building renovated and used. Can we afford it?
I think we have a healthy reserve fund. And we, we've worked really hard over the past few years to build that fund up for these type of projects. I don't think that we would have to go in debt to pay for it. And Mr. Hinkle had mentioned ARPA funds earlier. Based on the criteria, that's what we've been researching. It looks like the water system, the piping and the HVAC could be eligible to use the ARPA funds. So that would reduce part, half, probably half of the county's burden on that. In fact, we've got phone calls in to get it verified now to make sure that those would be eligible components of this project if we wanted to do it. And plus, keep in mind, within the next five years, we need to think about relocation
I do think that if you're gonna do it, you might as well do it right.
Oh, yes.
Don't, I wouldn't, you know, I don't, I don't like spending that kind of money on a half of a project if we're gonna do it. You know, let's, let's make sure it's right.
That's why I was leaning to the third option.
Well, for right now, do we want to set a low and a high?
I'd say a ballpark of two million dollars.
That sounds good.
That's what it sounds like, a ballpark of two million. That's between one point seven and...
Two point three.
Two point three.
Basically, you're authorizing the architect to proceed with conceptuals that you can start looking at and making some of those decisions that possibly could cut cost or increase cost or whatever, but it would give you something at least of visual. I think that's what John's asking for this evening is permission to proceed with that.
What's the rest of the board member's opinion? What's your call, sir?
My feeling is that we do it, we need to do it right. Appomattox, excuse me, is such a historical place. We want to represent the county well from a historical standpoint. That's, that's a big draw in Appomattox.
I agree. After, after what Ms. Adams had to say, I agree. Before that, I didn't. What I'm getting at.
Don't put that in stone yet.
We'll see what else comes up.
Yeah.
We don't know what unknowns are gonna happen.
So is there a motion?
Let's see what kind of motion.
Do we need a motion? Do you think you can tell me who's for?
Just okay to get some conceptuals so you can start planning.
Yeah, ballpark of two million.
All right, thank you. The other thing, I'll, I'll, I'll try to make this very, the board had requested staff do an assessment on one other buildings that the county owns and also look into a space utilization study. Are we using all of the buildings? Are we using them to the best of, of their possible usage? So we put an RFP, RFP out in late March. We had received eight proposals. We interviewed four against the facilities committee, Mr. Carter, Mr. Hinkle. And basically since late May, we've been negotiating with the firm that was chosen as, as number one. And that firm was Dominion Seven Architects out of Lynchburg, and that is Blair Smith's firm. So what I also sent to you is a scope of work contract that we have been working on, like I said, pretty much all summer. And this contract is for assessment, fiscal assessment of eight buildings. It's the county administration building, the sheriff's office, the treasurer commissioner revenue building, the public safety nine-one-one building, the courtland building, which is school board and social services, health department, which also includes voter registration in the basement, community center and the former Oakfield Ruritons Club. All right, and so of course we'd be looking at the buildings, but then on the programmatic side, we'll be also looking at the space utilization, the offices that are in those buildings, you know, just, or, or where they should be, do they need more space, less space, et cetera, et cetera. And what, after negotiation, the price and a lump sum price for what I just mentioned is sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. And this is a project that basically if it were to start now, it would, it would be, you know, mostly over by early next year, but some parts of it could run through June. And we have a couple alternates. Basically, we know that it's going to be a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour if we need additional services beyond this scope, whether that be architectural, engineering, mechanical, structural engineering, any of those disciplines. But it has to be agreed to by the county before they just bring in somebody to try to control our costs. And there's, there's another alternate that we can employ somewhere down the road if we want to. Basically, kind of a blank slate if, if we needed to look at some other type of building or something like that. We have a, we know what that would cost. So what I would, what I would ask for this evening is permission to enter into contract with Dominion Seven to undertake this assessment and space utilization study. Again, the, the upfront costs of, of this contract, not upfront, they're not demanding the money upfront, but it'd be sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. And Mr. Carter, Mr. Hinkle, Ms. Adams, is there anything that you want to add about this contract?
I think you covered it very well.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion?
Staff had already been authorized to put out the RFPs for this. So the board can, can absorb that expense out of the capital project fund that we already have appropriated, so no additional actions needed. Just a nod saying, okay, you're okay with proceeding.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Okay, we're gonna enter into our public hearings that were scheduled for seven o'clock. I don't have a... First is public hearing Hunter Street, T-Stroke, one oh three six, abandonment. Pursuant to thirty-three point two dash nine oh nine Code of Virginia Public Hearing has been duly authorized to consider the abandonment of the section Route T-ten thirty-six Hunter Street from the western boundary of property owned by the trustees of Liberty Baptist Church in a westerly direction for a distance of approximately five tenths of a mile or five hundredths of a mile. This matter is being considered by the Board of Supervisors at the request of Towne of Appomattox because a portion of Hunter Street in the children's park serves no public necessity, is no longer necessary as a part of the secondary system of state highways and such land is needed for parking in the children's park. Anyone here to address this? Now, we can take a vote. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the abandonment of Hunter Street.
Motion duly made, is that second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. I thought we had one more, but is it? Street acceptance? Yes. Okay, street accept, acceptance resolution. Sunset Ridge subdivision sections two B and I C three, and I can't read all that. Three C, huh? That's not a, no, nothing, no, ma'am. Mr. Randy Foster, in coordination with Virginia Department of Transportation, are requesting the addition of several subdivision streets in the Sunset Ridge subdivision, which is a wreck island district, into the secondary road system for maintenance of the falling subdivision roads which have been constructed by the subdivider, subdivider who's a developer at the Class A subdivision in accordance with the requirements of section thirty-two point two dash seven oh five Code of Virginia. At the Virginia Department of Transportation subdivision street requirement Ridge Line Drive, Laurel Lane, Scarlet Lane in three sections, Sunset Ridge Drive are requested to be added to the state system. Vdod personnel have inspected the streets and found them to meet their requirements. A resolution has been prepared by our consideration. Yes, sir. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. So Mr. Hibbs, you can go back saying everything is fine and then... Amish County Public Schools Federal Grant Supplemental Appropriation. Attached for the board's review and approval is a supplemental appropriation request from Dr. Bennett in the amount of three million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cent for Fund One. And forty thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and ninety-five cent for Fund Two. The funds are from federal grants. No new local funds are required. Did you have that before you look them over? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can we do these as one motion or we need two since it's two different funds? One motion? Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we do it in a supplemental appropriation for both of those funds that you just read off.
Motion duly made, is that second?
Second.
Discussion? We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hibbs, Mr. Jones, Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Next gentleman is a registrar reimbursement request. Patricia Morton, registrar is requesting the board's consideration to reimburse her for lunch in the amount of a hundred and three dollars and sixty-six cents provided a wrap-up meeting with summer interns. Since this was not a pre-approved expenditure, county staff needs authorization from the board to proceed with the reimbursement. Now, staff recommendation is county policy does not allow for reimbursement of meals for non-departmental staff. County staff requests board authorization to peru, to provide, proceed with the reimbursement request to Mrs. Morton for a hundred and three dollars, sixty-six cents. And floor is open for discussion of that. I can start it off by saying, no, sir, or no, ma'am, I do not agree with reimbursing Patricia Morton for not knowing the county policy or anything like that, just like me and I'll use the two ladies standing here, I want to take them out for lunch and charge it to the county. I'll take her to the whole room, as far as that goes, for lunch.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I was surprised to learn that the registrar had summer interns. I wasn't aware of that and where they came from.
Where did it come from?
Um, my understanding, they're VCU students. And she had inquired about getting county support from our IT department. And she was gonna provide the laptops. And so I instructed her that she could not utilize the IT department because of confidential information and that they would not have access to a network. And she should not be provided county equipment to the government.
Good answer.
How long did they work and how many of them were there before she took them out to lunch? We don't know?
It may have been a little...
Any other discussion?
My understanding, they did not work in this office, they worked in my place.
Let's see them, though.
Okay.
That's why we get concerned about security and sensitive information.
So they didn't even work here?
Remote Lisa?
The only time that I know that they came, and I did not know it till she got the invoice, was that, that for the wrap-up meeting of the partners.
Did we pay them to come here?
Not, not that I did.
What's the board's pleasure? Yeah, motion taken. Okay. Committee appointments, Blue Ridge Regional Jail Authority, Board of Appointments. Attached for our review and adoption is a resolution to reappoint Miss Susan Adams, county administrator, to the Blue Ridge Regional Jail Authority and reappoint Mr. John Spencer, informational services manager and purchasing agent as the alternate for such member for term commencing July one, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Like to say we're so happy for you and John to, to do this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution reappointing Mrs. Adams and Mr. Spencer to the Blue Ridge Regional Jail Authority Board.
Motion duly made.
Second.
And second. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Does, does that include a free one-night stay in the facility?
We can't accept yes.
That's not in the policy?
Oh, my. Okay, gentlemen, next is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes approval of bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations, line item transfers and fund transfers. Any item on the consent agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda or the request of any, from the request of any board member prior to the vote on the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered by the board individually in an order to which they were removed from the consent agenda immediately following consideration of the consent agenda. And we have before us, the consent agenda, any items for discussion or, or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have a, well, I guess I do have a question about a small matter that I can't seem to find right now, but I noticed in these...
now, but I noticed in the sheriff's office line invoices, there were two invoices for FOIA requests, one for 32 cents and one for 60-some cents. I'm just thinking, can... What is that even for?
Copies.
Should we be charging people for something that costs less than a dollar? I mean, it costs more time to get it on the agenda and get us to go over it and talk about it than it would be just to give them the piece of paper. I'm just, I don't know, is that our policy?
That's their policy.
It's their policy.
It would make Wanda very happy if we suggested that.
At some point, I mean, FOIA is part of our job, and if we have to print off a piece of paper and hand it to somebody, okay. I don't know that we should charge everybody for every piece of paper. If it's something that's, you know, going to take three reams of paper and six hours to do it, that's something different. If it's something readily available to us, you can hit print. Why are we charging people 32 cents?
That's a good point.
That's just, maybe we can't do it. Just something to think about for the future, maybe? I don't know if it's something we got to talk to the sheriff about, or it just seems like overkill. We got to vote on 32 cents? I mean...
Oh, you want to talk to the sheriff?
I made a note. I'll talk to him about that. He can change his policy.
And one of them was an attorney. He should have got it from the comments, attorney to begin with.
Yeah.
So I don't know why he's going to the sheriff's office to get something. But other than that, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion duly made, is that second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hibbs, Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
Also vote aye. All right, Mr. Latchey. Bless you all. Ms. Adams?
I have four pages. But I will not read this to you. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. Basically, it's just information from the departments to kind of keep you abreast of what's going on. I did put a reminder that if you're planning on attending the VACO conference, to please let Ms. Marshall know so she can make those reservations.
Let's see, when is that? I forgot.
November the... And it's in Richmond this year. Mm-hmm, it's in Richmond, so... What is it, the second weekend in November, whatever that is?
You know, it's one thing on your report here that I think it ought to be... Ought to be in bold letters, if you will. It's concerning the Cortland Festival Park, but the digital marketing side, I think that's going to be great. And be utilized for different purposes, things that's happening within the town and county. That is great. And y'all done a good job on securing that grant.
As well as Ms. Dixon reached out to the Moose Lodge, and they're donating the bench to go around the flagpole.
Oh, yes. November 13.
I also put a note on the solid waste department. I think it's been brought up on several occasions about the recycle centers, and I think Mr. Hinkle mentions about spring last month, and that problem has been temporarily corrected with gravel, but it's an ongoing problem that we receive complaints about spout spring and promised land all the time, every time it rains practically. Mr. Rourke and myself, we met today, and, you know, the board has talked about getting maybe putting out an RFP for paving services, so I think we're going to move forward. And even if we do one or two a year, try to go ahead and get that done. I think promised land would be priority, and then probably spout spring second.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hogan.
And I admit to being remiss, the citizen involved with that sent me an email and thanked me for the speedy correction, so I want to pass that on, that, you know, that citizens appreciate the speed in which that was taken care of.
Right. Don't get all kind of at a boy tonight, huh?
Been busy. Summertime's supposed to calm down a little bit. It hasn't calmed down.
Any other items?
No, sir, unless somebody has a question. And if it's something in the report that you would like to see that I haven't included, please let me know, and we'll make sure we get that in there.
Very good, very good. All right, next is reports and informational items we have before us, the school financial reports, and also the Rob Lee Lee Soul and Water Conservation District Board of Directors meeting. Any questions on those two items? If not, we'll move into supervisors' concern. Mr. Hibbs, Mr. Jones.
No concerns.
Mr. Hinkle.
I have two, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One is on the website, I had several calls about people saying, hey, who are the members of this committee? Who are the members of that committee? How do I get in touch with them? So I was wondering if it would be possible to put those committees on the website and say, this is a Falling River District member for this committee, and this is their contact info. And that way, when citizens want to have a planning commission that they want to express, they can call their planning commission member or library board or whomever. Because as is now, it's hard to tell who they are, or why. Some places it's listed, but then there's no contact information, so... Nor is it say, just lists these are the members and doesn't say what districts they represent for.
Okay.
That's number... Then the second one was, I was disappointed in the library board meeting, first of all, they didn't have a quorum. Second of all, there were several grandparents and parents there that expressed their... And plus, they had, you know, phone calls and emails from citizens expressing their concern over the sexual material being displayed proudly in the children's section. And the response basically was, from both the director of the library and the library board themselves, that they didn't see... The only issue they saw was, you want to take pride stuff out of the library. They didn't see that the issue was this material, this sexual material's not appropriate for that age group. In fact, I understand that one board member even broke down crying because we were trying to, the parents were trying to suppress this group of people that are suppressed already. And, you know, I don't know, I might be old, but when I was growing up, that type of material, you know, you could only get as an adult, and it was in plastic bags and on the top shelf of the grocery store. And I wish we could take action, like, back in my former state, the local government actually voted, they had on the ballot election, and they voted to defund the library because of that. Because in that state, the library has to request millage, and it's voted on by all the citizens, and the citizens voted down the millage because of that. So it wasn't just like, in our case, if we try to do something, it's, well, the board don't like us. But in that case, you know, it's the citizens, I see as that one detriment of the way we fund things is because we get told, here's your money, and divide it up, and then we catch all the flak because it's not enough or it's too much, and we really don't have any control.
Well, you really had some good items tonight. Yes, indeed. You take all that down, Ms. Adams. Mr. Hogan.
I'm not sure if I can put some on the shelf, but it's...
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I don't have anything. Our next meeting, that's September 19, 6:30.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I do want to thank the town manager for following up with our concerns from last month. I saw those emails that he's following up with Walmart. I think there was an article in the paper. I appreciate him following up on that.
I threw a tenth of a tam from last night when I came through there. I said, this is not a jungle, it's more of a Amazon jungle than anything I've seen lately. God. Let's see, we need to go back into...
Resume the closed session.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we return to the closed session.
Is that second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.